Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting of July eighteen, twenty twenty four. We have three planning board members present, so we have a forum tonight. Get right into the general business. We have a continuation of a public hearing at six thirty, which is Main Street. But before that, we'll try to get through a few of the work session items. As many as we can, and then we'll adjourn to the public hearing, and after that, we'll return to the work session. So the first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the June thirteenth, twenty twenty four draft minutes. I know Cindy, you've gotten comments from you people.
Yes. Drafted you have those.
Right. And I know you got comments from Barbara and myself, and I'm just. To read or?
No, we can keep them.
Just try and get a microphone. They're taped under the table, too, so stretch a little bit.
All right, we got problems with one of the mics, so we're gonna use another mic for the time being, but I'm sure the other one will be back in a second. Okay, so we can go ahead. The draft minutes of the June thirteenth meeting. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Approve three, nothing. The next planning board meeting was tentatively scheduled for August because we don't typically have a meeting in August. It's a an off month. We resume in September, which I believe is September twelfth this year on Thursday night. In discussion with staff, I don't think we have anything that's critical that we need to have an August meeting. So we're going to schedule the next meeting for September twelfth. So that notice will be sent out or it'll be on the website within a day, a couple of days, right?
Yes, if there's any public hearings to be scheduled, then it'll be noticed a little bit earlier. But if it's a regular work session, it would be noticed about two weeks before.
Okay, at least two weeks before that meeting.
Now that there won't be any August meetings.
Yeah, that's probably a good thing. And just just say agenda to follow or?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so let's get right into the first item on the work session, which is two twenty four East Main Street. We've already discussed this at a previous meeting. This is the Performing Arts Studio on East Main Street. So we need to get a update on what's been, what has occurred since our last meeting. And in general, the main item, I guess, was the development of floor plans of the second floor in particular. Is that correct?
Yes, correct. Well, the four that's on East Main Street. So the first floor of East Main Street, but the second floor of Traders Cove.
Okay.
So speaking with the expediter, there was a little bit of back and forth with the tenant and the owner on who would fund the plans and who would get them done. It, we just got alerted recently that it's finally gonna be done, I believe by the tenant. He's gonna get the floor plans done. So this application's currently closed. They'll probably, I would assume we recommend asking, for them to ask for an extension.
Yeah.
They have the sixty-two day clock and it's already halfway through that.
Right.
But we haven't heard any updates past that.
Okay, and I think we had talked or were thinking the extension probably should go through, at least through October, right? Just to give enough time to revise the plan and get us to review it.
Right, so the earliest we would review it would be September, and then I don't know if there's any comments or anything else that would need to be addressed at that point. So I don't see it being even resolved fully in September.
Yeah.
Probably will go till October at least.
Right, probably probably should make it past the date of the meeting, too, maybe the end of the month or something, which is Halloween, but.
Yeah.
Okay, and they have a new architect on board, right, to?
I believe they just hired one.
Just hired an architect to draft the floor plan, so that's progress. So we should be seeing that in September. Okay, next item is one sixteen West Broadway, which we've already talked about. It's the West Ferry Office, the building that, if anyone drives by the waterfront, they'll see it across from Cigar's Restaurant. Nearly looks complete, at least the exterior. And it was primarily a discussion about a generator at the northeast corner of the property in the rear parking lot in the corner. And the equipment on the west side of the property, four heat pumps and one condenser. So we're getting an update today, I guess, and also some A R C comments. We'll talk about those, right?
Yes, the A R C submitted their comments, requesting that the enclosure around the dumpster reflects the same siding that's along the building to try to keep some cohesiveness. They're pretty minor comments, and a lot of it's just more aesthetics than anything actually structurally they would change. The representative isn't here, unfortunately. I recommended that there's a draft reso that notes the planning board would approve it on the condition that the A R C comments are reflected in the new design. But the representative isn't here to kind of confirm that that would be okay. So if we could revisit this maybe later, if he shows up after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I guess this will be pushed back till we hear for more revised plans. We haven't received it. Yeah. The comments we did also just receive this past Wednesday, so it was a quick turnaround time to ask the representative to reflect them. But we just haven't heard anything positive or negative, so we don't know if that's a possibility they're willing to entertain or if it's something that they don't want to do at all, so.
Right, okay, so yeah, we should we should wait, probably at least give them a chance.
Yeah. I got a call earlier from Cindy Kiff from E A Day. She said Eric's on vacation, but she will be attending tonight.
Okay, right. And if I recall, the A R C comments on the, at least on the generator, what, I think they said. I may be confusing. I'm not gonna say anything because I may confuse it with another memo because we got three sets of comments from them, so.
I have them up on the screen.
Okay, I'll ask the question then. Were they the ones that said that the comments would would maybe be less costly to implement?
I don't believe so. I don't think that was for this one.
Wrong, okay. It was one of the other two then, all right.
It does mention like less maintenance, depending on the material, but I don't know if it was.
Less maintenance is always a good thing.
Most of the comments were they just want the enclosure to be generated to reflect the building.
Right, right, to make it consistent with the building, yeah, seems, but we need concurrence from them and that they'll go along with them. Okay. Okay, so we'll revisit that one a little later, or at least we'll talk about it, whether or not they're here.
I don't know if they would.
Come and say that there's like a cost issue, maybe that's why they can't do this siding, it was just stuck a block. That's where I don't want to speak.
The cost difference is gonna be negative.
Possibly later. Give me a chance to show up, then we can have the discussion. Yeah, temporarily table it right to the end.
Chairman, do you want to discuss the first item on the agenda?
The work session.
The work session item?
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. We'll go back. Talk about that. Now we're back to two twenty four East Main, the Performing Arts Studio. Okay. Hi, Amy.
Can you just pull the mic to you? Thank you.
I think, I believe what we had said or what we knew was that there was an architect hired, I guess.
Yes.
And the floor pins, plans will be revised. And that was the main request or outstanding item on this, so we're waiting for those and then we'll review them. But we need to give, give an extension to, probably till October.
Okay.
Just to enable us to discuss, assuming the floor plans come in before September, because we're not gonna meet in August.
Okay.
We typically take August off. So that would give us an opportunity to discuss it September and then maybe ascertain that final comments have been made in October. So maybe till the end of October or something. If you can get the applicant to request an extension to the end of October, that would be good.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll, we'll request that. And I did speak to the architect yesterday. The tenant ended up hiring an architect. There was some back and forth on who, who was taking financial responsibility for it, but they worked it out. So it's been ordered, and she wanted some clarification yesterday, which I provided to the best of my ability. So we will submit the plans as soon as they're ready and then, of course, wait for comment from Deidra and Tom if they are adequate enough and if anything should be added. So hopefully, we'll have those by the end of the month.
Okay.
But yeah, so October would be fine, and I will request that extension.
Yeah, I think we'd need something in writing normally for the file, just to, you know, keep that going.
Okay.
But that's, you know, that should cover that. I don't think there's anything else in there, right, Deidra?
Nope, that was it.
Yeah, okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right. We're gonna skip back to. We should be able to have a talk about cigar. One eleven West Broadway.
Yeah, you're right.
So we, we did receive the photometric plan with very minimal light bleeding out past the dining area that's over there. So that satisfies that request on that.
And the lighting, the outdoor lighting they were putting up was gonna match the physical view, the physical poles were gonna match.
Well, they did, they did sconces across the building facade that were shining down.
Oh.
However, the, we got this afternoon.
Yeah, this afternoon.
A R C comments. They're, they're not minor.
Okay.
They're also not, they're not saying you have to do it, but we would like to see if you can do these things. So they were changing, they were looking to make some changes to that facade. And I think they're good ideas, but they want them to relocate kitchen exhausts. So that, that could be a costly item. So I think there needs to be a dialogue back and forth between the A R C and the applicant to see what they're willing to do and what, and what cost implications they may be. They may translate that back to the A R C and say, we can't do this. It's just, it's too much money for what we're doing right now. And I think the A R C would be okay with that. But I think my recommendation to the planning board would be for, to request that the A R C meet directly with the applicant to go back and forth through the ideas that they want. There's lighting things, like you said, the pole. I don't know if the pole's a good idea, to be honest with you. I like more the down lighting, that that lights the surface rather than shining out across the water in people's eyes. There could be some of that light bleeding also went through the waterways and things like that, which I don't think would be a great idea. But, you know, a lot of restaurants now are doing those. I don't know if you've seen those low voltage lights, they string. Now, you know, might be, you know, it's ambient lighting. That might be nice. We'll call it over there. It'd be certainly an enhancement. They make it like glow like a little jewel box, which would be okay. But again, these are all A R C comments, and I think that needs to have that dialogue back and forth between them. So that would be my recommendation for them to speak to each other. If they come to a conclusion of what they're going to accept and what they're willing to do.
That sounds like the best, best thing for them to get together because the A R C, I think, is open to compromise. I think we saw that on, on Conifer Two, right?
Yeah, no, they're definitely open to compromise, and as, you know, they are a committee, and they're not a board.
Right.
You know, it's ultimately you guys, you know, whatever recommendations that come across. You either approve or not approve what you see there. And I think, again, that that dialogue back and forth with them, with the information given back to you and what cost implications versus aesthetic benefit would be addressed, and then we can make an educated decision on that.
Okay.
And this A R C's recommendation, that those get us in.
They did. They did, they did kind of, you know, indicate they may want to look at it. They didn't say they had to do it. So it was a lot of like suggestive type of things in there. There were a couple of protrusions. It's in the report. There were a couple of protrusions, shed protrusions on the side of the building. I think there was storage. They wanted them to remove that, to clean up that facade, extend the decorative railing that hides the H O C. So they're calling out for a chain link fence. They'd like to see something a little bit more elaborate than a chain link fence. They didn't say what that was. But again, that's, that's the dialogue I think the A R C needs to have, where the applicants come back and say, yeah, we agree with this. We'll put this, this, this.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. I think staff's recommendation is, is, is okay because this board is taking a break for August, so the applicant has time to go back to the A R C. But wouldn't this discussion about what the A R C is recommending while the applicant is there making their presentation, wouldn't that dialogue have already happened if the A R C says, would you consider this? And the applicant said, well, that might be too costly. Wouldn't that dialogue have already happened?
Well, we only got the comments today, so I don't know.
What I'm saying at the A R C, the applicant was at the A R C.
No, no.
They were not. Typically, the applicant is at the A R C.
No.
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 No, we send a request to the A R C and all, and the plans, and then they make the comments back to us.
But they will meet if we request it.
So, okay, because the last couple of A R C meetings I was at, the applicant was there, and that was on request of the planning board. I stand corrected, okay.
What about, rather than relocating, relocating all those exhausts, is there a way that they could be hidden?
Well, that's the other, again, the A R C will work with them on that. You could put some sort of shield in front of there. It could be some sort of fin or, or, you know.
Right.
Lattic, I hate lattice, I use the word lattice, but you know, you know what I mean, some sort of cover over that that allows the airflow.
Right.
And I don't think you'd want them blowing down too on the customers that are eating there as well.
Right.
I don't, that's, that's a good, I don't know the code compliance on that. I think there has to be a specific distance from an exhaust fan to.
To people eating there, okay.
So, you know, that might.
Would make sense.
Yeah.
That's more a mechan, engineering question than an architectural, so it's a little above my pay grade. I could find out. I could make some inquiries and just see. I'll speak to one of my engineers.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You are. We, Andy, we need to request an extension as well.
Will they be on the agenda? Will they typically be on the agenda? They wouldn't be on the agenda for next month because they'll be at the A R C.
Well, you're right, they can meet in a week with the A R C. They can come back to us, but I don't think that's gonna happen, but.
We'll check the, check the clock on that.
Okay.
And see if they, if they'll need to give the board an extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, again, as you can see on this, on the screen there, they have pretty detailed comments. I mean, they do photos. They do renderings, they do notes on the renderings. It's really, really impressive.
Wrote back right away. I'm like, we're not reaching, I had a direct resolution ready to go, and I put that to the side.
Okay, six twenty one. Do we have time to do one hundred Oakland Avenue? Probably, right? The applicant's not here, so that usually makes it go faster. All right, so what's new on that one is the, again, the A R C comments, right? Because we had requested them.
Correct. So the A R C requested a little bit of a change with the layout of the solar panels. And they also requested a metal cabinet around the meters to kind of shield them a little bit from the view because right now it's just.
The existing meters, yeah.
It's existing, it's shown, and it's not the prettiest sight on that facade of the building. And technically, it's a side, but it's completely open to anyone that's driving by. When we had originally asked for a screening plan from the applicant, they just gave us the idea that they'd put a hanging plant on that corner, which we didn't really think was very adequate. So that's when it went to the A R C, and the A R C requested the metal cabinet and a little tweaks to the solar panels. Them as well. We haven't heard any back, anything back or any revisions to their plans or if they'd be willing to do what the A R C recommended. I don't think it's too big of changes, but because it's solar panels, I'm not too sure if it's, with the changes they're requesting, how that changes if it's more costly, if it's less costly, that I'm not too sure because I'm not too familiar with solar panels. And this is our first one on a commercial roof, so I guess we want to be a little bit more careful to make sure it is something that's feasible for them. So I think they might also, if they do have any requests with the A R C, they may also be requesting to meet with them as well. The A R C originally was gonna meet, I believe, next week, but that had to be postponed. But it's still, because we're not meeting in August, gives them about two months to have any discussions if they need to. But so far, we haven't heard anything back from the applicant.
And that view, actually, that parking that's in front of those meters is on the adjacent property, right? So that's why it's a bit of a concern because it's facing that property.
No, look, I'm surprised there's not a bollard or something in front of that protecting it. I think that's logical, code.
The panels?
The meters themselves.
The meters, yeah. Yeah, had to hop the curb, but yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's why we also want to be a little extra careful because it is right against the neighboring property. They're already gonna start seeing solar panels that would go on the roof. We want to make sure that balances out.
Just one thing to notice is that even though we approved this or here, this will still be an ice.
Right. Right, so we've got. Okay. And this one, we're going into a little detail because it's the first one on a commercial site in the village. So we want to make sure we got all the Ts crossed and Is dotted on it.
And it's not on a flat roof where maybe people wouldn't see it. This is very visible.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be very visible, right? And I believe the A R C had some comments on the alignment of the panels, right, the spaces to make them more, was that a visual thing or? Like improve the visual aesthetics of it or?
Sometimes they chicklet them when they put them out, if you know, like touches them.
Seen that, yeah.
And it just looks, you know, if there's a vent coming through, they'll like miss a whole panel sometimes, too. It just looks a little off when they do that.
Yeah. So we'd like some comments back from the applicant before proceeding anywhere with this.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Um, I think they provided that on the plans. I can get the plans right now.
Actually, I'd be a little bit more concerned with the snow going over that fallen oak gutter. Somebody walking on that sidewalk. You gotta use your access that block for that, first, you know, it's coming. For the moment, you know, you've got enough snow on there, it's gonna come down.
And they also got put in same device that they put on roofs, slap the ice from sliding.
Yes, snow guards.
Snow guards, yeah.
And it's certainly gonna fall on the soul first, yep.
Okay, will, any other questions or comments?
I mean, it doesn't show, it seems very close to the gutter. So these are the plans that they submitted and.
Comes all the way down.
All the way down there.
All the way down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, no problem.
One hundred Oakland, we're gonna adjourn till September. Uh, we'll, yeah, they have to. We should talk, talk with the A R C again on this one.
Especially their install.
Unless they have no problem with any of the A R C recommendations, then we're good. I mean, we're, they're good, right?
No, we don't.
We don't know, yeah.
Yeah, we, we sent them many emails, tried calling them, a lot of trying to reach out. We had to reach out to the property owner, but the property owner hired the solar panel company and is not familiar with.
No.
Procedure.
It at all.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we just got in contact with someone from the company two days ago.
Yeah, he said he was coming tonight.
Yeah, but.
I spoke to someone in sales at the solar, at Greenlee Solar, and he appreciated our patience. It was the first time he was hearing about it, and he said he'd be here tonight.
You need, you need to show up?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of people think that the applications are being discussed later, so.
Okay, so we should try to hook them up with a discussion with the A R C and see. See if they're okay with it. I mean, it didn't seem like major comments.
It doesn't, but I, with the configuration of the panels on the roof, I, that's where I'm a bit hesitant at, just kind of making a condition of approval.
Gotcha, okay. Sounds good. All right, well, almost at six thirty, so we're getting set up for the public hearing.
We briefly discussed. For one eleven, yeah.
Yeah, and they were, we just, we discussed them before. They were significant, I think, in the group. They're not demanding it.
Right.
They are recommendation. I think Eric just needs to speak with the owners of cigar and to review them.
Yeah.
And maybe they come up with a plan.
Okay, this, this is, it's six thirty on the dot, so this is a continuation of the public hearing for fifteen fifteen Main Street. Earth Dog is the proposed tenant. I think probably anybody who speaks has already been sworn in, but we'll check on that, I know you have, Amy.
Yes.
Um, but why don't we start with staff with a brief update? And then we'll continue with discussion of the, of the new items, I guess, or the new item from, that's outstanding from, it's basically D O T comments.
Right, so, yeah, one of our last conferences with the, for us to reach out to the D O T, so D O T got back to us, um, they assigned a case number to this with a list of items that are gonna be required, um, for them to approve this. So, uh, I, I know they were probably sent to you as well.
Hmm.
So they're, they're, these reflect earlier comments that we had made, um, with the backing up onto, onto Main Street, as well as the drainage, you know, all those, all those items were on there, they wanted some cleanup on the plans, they wanted A D A details, they wanted, the plans were congested, is what they said. So they want them separated out, uh, use more sheets is what they said, I know Tariq, I've worked with her in the past, she's pretty much a stickler for the code. So, um, I don't know if you have an update on where you, or you want an update now on that, or?
An update now, what?
Where you are with all this.
Well, first of all, the, uh, design professional that's been working on this, Tom Volpus, doesn't handle D O T plans.
Okay.
So we would have to go to another engineering firm to have a plan done, um, the cost is, you know, a bit, a bit up there. Uh, the concern is, is, unfortunately, this kind of came up in the ninth hour from the last hearing, so we thought we were at a point where we were gonna be able to move forward to the next step, and now we, we're not. So, it's a bit problematic, the other concern is that we're not gonna be able to keep five parking spots in the front of this
Yeah, that might be.
building, yeah, um.
Yeah, that reflects our earlier comments.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I don't think D O T was ever involved until, you know, the last hearing, or at least after that, so that's, uh, you know, obviously, now they're big brother here. Um, so with that said, the concern is that we are going to end up with less parking, which can affect what we would pay towards pileup, so I don't know how we move forward from here. Would you like to?
We're gonna withdraw, because our business is gonna hurt. There's, we have no parking for an almost six thousand square foot building, how are we gonna make money? You know, if we put a curb in front of there, all I can think is how much more dangerous it's gonna be for having one way coming out, now you're gonna have someone else trying to come in on Main Street to try to park there.
Right.
You know, so.
Yeah.
It, to me, that just made a bunch of problems.
Yeah.
The other thing too is, why should I pay for an engineer's report when maybe in another six months, you tell me I gotta do something else? I don't know where the end game is for this business.
Yeah, the, the.
So I don't know why I should put more into it.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I mean, since it's on a state road, we'd always request D O T comments, so.
Which is totally understandable, but this is something that should have happened three years ago, like, if I go to Brookhaven and I go to take out a permit, I give them my survey, they circle everything, and go, this is what we need, you need these five pieces of things done, and we have an inspector come down, you know? And I've been doing it with my house.
Hmm.
And my property, because I just had to get it full rezoned and everything for palm land and agriculture. So I definitely know what the process is on that point, but these are all things that if I had them in the beginning, when I did my pre-submission and I asked exactly what I need to do, because unfortunately, I'm new to it. I have a business, it was turnkey, I didn't have to deal with all this, I didn't know about this, if I knew about how crazy this was gonna be, I probably would have picked a different location, especially for something that truthfully, I've been losing sleep over, and now I gotta lose more parking over it? I just know, just as anybody else would know, if you went to a different business and you couldn't find per, parking, that's like one thing, I'm just not gonna go there.
I would agree with that.
So, it's, it's hard to keep going with it when I keep getting things taken away. You know what I mean? So, if I have to go this route and we have to lose more parking, I, I can't have a business there.
Is there any way to?
Because at the mo, and I, I don't want to interrupt you, at the moment, I literally sat at Terrace one night in the front and just took videos of all the people going in and out. They're, you know, Terrace is man, they're gonna lose their parking, I have another broke, they're worried about dog group, I'm worried about, I have another broken window in another place, because there's beer bottles being thrown at it. So, irregardless of, we understand what the code and everything, and we get that, but we stayed to retail in the beginning, and that was what thankfully, the board tried to figure out for us, to try to get this business in there. And then it's just been, after another, it's been like another, every time we take one step forward, we get ten steps back. So, if we have to do this, I have to just not do it.
So my question was, is there any way that from one municipality to the other, a conversation could be had with D O T, like, I don't know how that works internally, because I'm, I'm on the outside.
I think, I am, I'm gonna chime in on this, but I think D O T is, I see.
Well, D O T and staff would work together on it, but D O T has certain, uh, design guidelines, and we want to work with them on that. It's not our job really to design your site.
Right.
So I can't tell you if you can work it out, but we'd be happy to work with you, if you have options, we can work with you on that. But, um, the, the D P W is a, State D O T is a separate entity.
Yeah, no, I realize that, of course. Um, I guess my question is, is because I, I don't work for a municipality, so I don't know how it works from like one agency to the next, if there is any type of leniency on what would be required normally, um.
We can work on behalf of the applicant to plead leniency, but I can tell you what the process would be after D O T.
Right.
Is that you can go to the zoning board of appeals and ask for relief from the maximum amount of parking. The zoning board of appeals, uh, can make a finding where they can reduce the parking or forgive the five spaces up front. That may be a path forward, and then from there, you would continue to go on whatever you have left over, you would go for your pileup.
Yeah, but, well, yes.
There is a path forward after D O T, I'm not saying that there's any guarantee, but there still is a path forward.
Of course.
Right.
Yeah, well, I, and that we, we do know, I think the concern is, is that in real life, those spots are really gonna go away. So it's not about requesting relief or paying pileup, we were prepared to do that, it's about the fact that now that D O T is involved at this stage of the process, that parking is going bye-bye. If we get two spots out of that, it will be a miracle. So, um, I think that's really the concern, so what I was getting at more was, you know, um, can a conversation be had with D O T to discuss that? I mean, I just, I don't, I, I'm just trying to think outside the box because of where we're at with this, and last time, I was like, we're right there, and now I'm like, we're not. So, that's the issue.
I would put Tariq in Paris, I can reach out to him.
So.
Staff will reach out to D O T and see if there are options.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, I understand it's a conversation and there's no guarantee, but we're just trying to figure something out. Uh, I guess after that conversation occurs, if you could just obviously share that with me, and then Katrina can make a decision if she wants to formally withdraw the application or not.
I'll try to keep it through email, and I will keep a copy on it.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
Generally, I'd do like to meet with her, um, down in their offices over.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll keep the dialogue over.
Okay, so with that said, I have nothing further to add, Mr. Chairman, members of the board?
There was one other, did we get an email, Cindy?
Yeah, I have it.
You, okay.
Yeah, it was some comments from Tara Inn. Um, from Tara Higgins, an email was received today, July eighteenth. I thought this came in a little earlier, no?
Similar one came in earlier.
Similar one came in, okay, so this is, this is a later one. Um, I, I'll read it into the record, "Our family owns and operates Tara Inn located at fifteen nineteen Main Street. We also own the adjacent parking lot in between Tara Inn and fifteen fifteen Main Street. We direct our employees to park in the back of the lot so that we leave the more accessible space for customers. I understand that the tenants have a proposed drop-off system for dog grooming, but am aware that there will also be merchandise sold at this location, and am concerned with Earth Dog customers using our parking lot. We look forward to a positive relationship with our new neighbors as we have many, as we have the many businesses that have preceded them in the forty-six years that we have operated Tara Inn." So that's comments from Tara Higgins. Um, so we should adjourn to our next meeting, which is in October, right?
September.
September.
I'm sorry.
September twelfth.
I'm sorry, I'm skipping a month, I want two months off. So, well, can I get a motion to adjourn the hearing to September twelfth?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the hearing till September twelfth.
All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Have a good summer, everybody.
Thank you, you too. Okay, we'll, uh, do we want to go backwards, uh, has anybody arrived that we're gonna go back and touch, uh,
Um.
a couple of the items we already talked about in the work session?
I think, other than Amy's other one that we already discussed with her, um, a representative for one sixteen West Broadway and one hundred Oakland is also here.
Okay.
And, um, one hundred, and one eleven West Broadway is also here, so we could just start after the performing arts, again.
Start at one six.
One sixteen.
Sorry, one sixteen, yes.
So start at one sixteen, okay. Okay, so this is one sixteen West Broadway, this is the proposed West Ferry office, which we've already had a discussion earlier. Have you seen the A R C comments?
Yeah.
Okay, any, any reaction, or any?
Um, I spoke to Eric, and he spoke to the owners, and he said that they're okay to comply with everything that the A R C has recommended, um, to change the, uh, stucco block, block wool to be, um, blue gray color and to match the, uh, the hardy plank. Um, the, they would discuss with the contractor to see what the best way is, going concrete and stucco to put that hardy plank on, what the best way is for it to be sturdy, um, we'll discuss that with the contractor, um, making the grip, the seat white in color and to match the trim of the building at the time, um, and then to put the white metal hoping on top.
Okay, so can we proceed with a draft resolution?
Yep, if no one has any comments, or if there are any comments I can add to it, then.
Okay.
Um, I don't see, why not?
I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna take a read through this, I don't know if you have a chance to look at it.
So you could say the draft resolution. And also, if you make comments, you can speak into the mic for future, thank you.
Yeah, just give us a couple of minutes to, uh, take a look at this. You almost want to have some background music while we do this.
Yeah, I forgot about that, because I wasn't sure. Yeah.
We'll add in the, uh, the signature and all that, proportion here, the acceptance of that.
Yeah. The.
The conditions are all, all good.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I believe they already have, you know, water authority, P S E G, national grid, um, the sewer district, uh, as far as the sewer connection, we're still working on that, I just want to be clear, prior to issuance of the building permit for this dungeon enclosure, because I know we got a hiccup last time, I just want to make sure that, like, for additional, we already, you know, complied with the health department and things, but I just want to know if there's additional documents that you're looking for in particular that we might not have provided?
Um, will that be collected with the building permit, so when it hits the building permit process and the building inspector is going out, he'll require that, that's just kind of preemptive, letting you know that that will be required during that process.
Okay.
Not during this process, you're gonna file it, file it for the permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but we had a delay last time, because the D O T and some other things, so I just want to make sure that, like, when, when this goes through, through planning, and then we just, it moves over to the building department, that it's not like, oh, we have to wait a few months because we need to go back to the apartment or, um, for a second.
No, no, you would come for a building permit with those, so it'll prove all those approvals.
With them.
Okay.
Any comments?
Nope.
Okay, and you're gonna add the signature statement with the chair.
Yes. And then.
You need to join us with a signature and bring them back, once they're updated, quick, yeah.
Yes, with the, with the A R C comments, yes.
The A R C comments.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the draft resolution, uh, with the amendment of the signature paragraph, um, for the planning board chair? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, Deidre, where are we going next?
Uh, next is one eleven West Broadway.
Okay.
Do you want to come sit next to me, if you have any questions, if you could speak? Come on, sit next to me, if you have any questions?
Okay, so you've, have you seen the A R C comments?
I have. Did you see the A R C comments this afternoon, that concern?
I can give them on.
I don't think you did, okay.
We can get the copies.
Yep. I think we just have A R C too, yeah, okay. That's not before in the A R C comments.
I know it's a lot to go through, because there's a lot there, although it's very nicely illustrated to help you follow along, they do, they do good stuff. The, in terms of explaining everything, the A R C.
You want me to summarize a little bit?
Yeah, maybe, um, okay.
So, um, we had requested from the last meeting a photometric plan for the wall fixtures that were selected by Eric to be around there. And the requirements for the, uh, we don't have dark sky requirements, but the wood, the light level was fine. That was represented on the dining area and was not bleeding out into the creek that's over there, which we felt was very important. The A R C had come back with comments and pretty extensive on these. They, well, they are comments. Some of these may be costly and may not be feasible for you to do. Uh, I think you need to review them with Eric. See what you're comfortable with doing, potentially. I made a recommendation for, to the board that you meet with the A R C to go through them. You know, they're looking to possibly relocate kitchen exhaust to additional lighting, additional screening. There are some fence, um, you called out Forbes, um, I think it was chain link fence. They were looking for more of a decorative type of fence to, you know, be put up along the canal area over there. So I think it's important for you to be comfortable with what you wanna put in and, and, and expend over there. And have the A R C understand what you're willing to do on that. So I'm gonna make a recommendation to the board that you guys, as soon, as soon as we can have the A R C meet, we'll, we'll let you know. And whenever it's available and you are available to come down and just meet with them to go through those items.
Okay. Um, do they meet, or is it something where they meet once a week where it's?
Um, not as frequently as once a week. They, we're supposed to meet next week, but it ended up getting postponed. They usually meet at the least once a month. Um, but if we have something pressing, we can generally try and ask them to come in a little bit more frequently just to review it.
Yeah, on this, I think we would push them to meet with you sooner than later.
Yeah, so we could let them know.
Okay.
But everything else has been satisfied in terms of the requests that we made between the D C noncompliance, um, uh, nonjurisdiction, I mean, C noncompliance. Nonjurisdiction, the health department, we understand that the sewer availability, you're all good with that, so. Um, just pending those potential changes that may happen or not happen.
Right.
After discussion with them.
Right.
Uh, we, I feel comfortable presenting a, a resolution to approve the project.
Okay. So with the, there was the exhaust, that, that's something I think we're really gonna have to speak to the A R C about 'cause that was pretty intense.
Again, like Gil said before, that can't be moved. Maybe there's some sort of screening you might wanna put in front of there.
Yeah.
We're also gonna look into the code on that 'cause I think there is a minimum separation from the exhaust to occupancy.
Okay.
Um, and that's typical. I know, uh, particularly with kitchen exhaust.
Okay, so the seating area gets a little bit smaller, more towards the front.
Yeah, those are, those are three separators and whatnot that are in them, so.
Okay, and then, um, the other thing was the railing. They gave us a few options. Yeah, I know you met with the, the fence person and they gave you the, the white PVC. They're looking at maybe at some different options of changing.
They are, they are ready to, to change whatever, uh, the quality.
They gave you like three options, so we can discuss which one you wanna go with and get pricing.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, they were, they were looking for something to blend in a little bit more with the bulkhead and the, uh, and the landscaping that's already there. The white would stick out a little.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As well as being in that environment next to the water and the plants will develop mold and-
Yeah, they were looking for something more like that maybe, but you, you can get pricing and see what we wanna do. Um, and then the lighting, they were looking at to do maybe light posts, but then that light would bleed into the creek, I noticed that, so maybe-
Yeah, I, I think that, that, that could be a point of discussion, yeah.
Yeah, it might be something where we do a wall mount style like that, but maybe a wall mounted center.
Yeah, that could be.
But that, but the, yeah, the exhausting, that's something that's definitely have to be discussed with the A R C. And updating the sign, just refacing and painting it.
Well, the sign, it, it will be a separate application. We, we're not looking to address at this point. You can say we are going to address it, um, um, with the sign application.
With the sign application.
It's not, not for this board, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
So, we have another meeting, Eric and the A R C.
With Eric and the A R C. Yeah, I, I will have the range in. Mm-hmm, yes.
I think someone from the planning staff should be there too.
We'll have to find.
Yeah, I usually, I'm usually around to, for the A R C meetings.
Um, and I, Cindy asked me to bring two sets of plans.
Yeah, we'll have it to our file.
Thank you.
So has the photometric, it's a hard copy, so the photometric.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Our next meeting, uh, if we didn't already say this, is September, September twelfth.
Okay.
So hopefully, you know, this can get resolved or discussed with the A R C compromised. And then we can, uh, you know, vote on it on September twelfth. That's in a, in an ideal situation, so hopefully that happens.
Okay. Okay. Right, and then we can go forward with the planning, planning resolution.
Yeah, that's what we wanna do is with the resolution on, get the resolution approved on, on September twelfth. That's the target.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
'Cause we don't meet in August, so.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You too. Okay, we at three twenty-two Main Street next?
Three twenty-two Main Street.
Um, wait, can we do one hundred Oakland? I think they're represented from the solar panels.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. Oh, hi, how you doing? Come on up to the, grab a seat on the, uh-
I brought some, some toys as well, for a little throw and towel. And sorry I couldn't make the previous meetings, um, but I'm the owner of Green Leaf Solar. We're in East Attoket.
Oh, okay.
And we are working with Nick Zolkowski with Brookhaven Agency on getting solar on his office building.
Yeah.
Um, so from the previous meetings that I wasn't able to attend, I know there were two main comments. One regarding the layout, which I actually had our engineer change today.
Okay.
The main thing that was kind of really screwing up the layout and the aesthetic of it is this one vent pipe that came up right in the middle of the array.
Uh, we can, you, we have a, a, a view of the roof up there.
Oh, yep, perfect. So that, that pipe right in the middle screws everything up, and that's the south facing roof, so.
Right.
Economically for Nick, that's the roof that he ha, kind of has to use for solar to make sense. I had my engineer, Michaela, go over there today and she went into the attic, went into the roof, and confirmed that that's a dormant vent pipe.
Oh, okay.
So that, that goes to literally nothing.
So you can cap it and, uh?
So we're gonna cap it, get, you know, pull out the, um, the flashing that goes underneath the shingle, make sure to re-shingle it so it doesn't leak or anything like that, and this is the new layout that I have right here. So thirty-seven panels all evenly spread out, no big gap right in the middle like we had before.
That looks better. I think that would satisfy the A, the A R C.
Um, so yeah, I'll make sure to send like a digital, have, um, Victoria, our office manager, send a digital copy of that as well for, for your records. Oh, sorry. And the other thing was the electrical equipment on the outside of the building. So it's right there, right next to the, uh, meter boxes that are right there. We are very open to putting a, you know, like a little mesh door type thing that would close, a box around it, paint it like a similar color. I actually brought the equipment, just so you guys could see it. So this, there's two boxes that'll go out there. One is this. This is the disconnect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is in case there's a fire. The fire department can come and shut off the system, so there's no, there's not, you know, ten, fifteen thousand watts on the roof just waiting to zap someone. But this is one thing, and, you know, you tell aesthetically, we can stick it in a box, but it kind of, they build these things to kind of match the, you know, aesthetics of the existing equipment. The other thing is, this is kind of like a computer. These things are very expensive, but this is the other box that goes on the outside. This is the computer for the solar panels, basically, and, you know, this connects to Nick's Wi-Fi. It shows him if something's wrong with the system. It shows us if something's wrong from the system. I could be in, I could be in China visiting my grandparents and it'll still, I, I can see how many watts Nick produced in a day.
So would those go next to the, um, electrical meters?
Yes, so these would go next to the electrical meters. This can, this is, it's flexible on where this can go. Uh, we can stick this in a box, no problem. This has to be outside, so the fire department can, they know, you know, 'cause the first thing they do is they try to turn off the meters, turn off the electric, and turn off the solar, so there, the house is not live anymore.
I mean, there may be some we may wanna also review with the fire marshal if we're gonna be enclosing these in a mesh screen. Their access to it? If there's, if there disconnects.
For once we've got a term, it could be a privacy partition. Doesn't that have to be enclosed, right? It could be a view shed block.
I think there's minimum requirements of separation and from that, and I don't know if you're gonna have that there. I think it's three feet in front of the, that electrical.
It's a, yeah, there's a three feet away from this equip, uh, from the meter at least, and probably from the disconnect as well.
Discussion with the A R C.
A R C and the, uh, fire marshal. I also want Jim to take a look at that, 'cause there's a lot of exposed conduit out there with cars parking right up to it. You may want some protection on that.
When, when you say three meter distance, do you mean like horizontally?
No, from the face, back.
From the face back.
It allows somebody to get in there to be able to work on it or disconnect it or what they need to do.
Do you have three feet?
Right now, it's wide open. You have-
But it's on somebody else's property, isn't it?
Property, yeah.
Yeah, we're not sure exactly where the property lie, the property line is currently. I think we tried contacting the owner and they had a survey, but we couldn't really tell 'cause it wasn't to scale. I believe he did tell us that from the brick face to the curbing that starts the parking lot, it's about four feet.
Oh, so you have-
So that whole little strip is, uh, but I'm not sure where one property ends and their property starts. That's what is a little bit more muddled. It might be one feet, it might be two feet, it might be all four feet, but I'm just not too sure.
But then wouldn't he be able to reach some kind of agreement with the neighboring property?
He would have to. That'd be some easy to replace, yeah.
Right.
And the neighboring property is up for sale right now. And I'm just-
Oh, okay.
Okay. Good to know.
One of my concerns is the solar panels coming so low towards the, um, gutter.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I just wonder, especially with, um, Dr. Mendelson's property up for sale, you, you don't have the people out there, um, you know, when you have active people walking around, it's a deterrent to anybody who is going to cause problems. So with those solar panels coming so far down towards the gutter, can a rogue person kind of do damage to it or?
Not necessarily. Um, so they have to, by code, I don't know if it's by, you know, your code or just in general, when we install, we keep them at least twelve inches away.
From the gutter?
From, from the gutter.
Okay.
Um, also, these things are very, very sturdy. Like this thing in my lap is probably fifteen pounds and the panels are, you know, fifty pounds each. And our guys, whenever they're working, they stand on them. They-
Oh, so they're very durable, if somebody takes an hour or something, you can't-
They're very- Yeah, on the plans, um, on the plans, it shows like the wind that they've been tested for. These things are tested for a hundred twenty-five mile per hour winds. And they, you know, in South Florida, they're solar all over South Florida.
Make sure it's a hundred thirty-five mile per hour, 'cause they, they did change our codes.
I believe it's, it's something, it might be a hundred thirty-five.
Is it one thirty-five there?
Uh, but it's very high.
It's gonna be one thirty and one forty, so we go with one thirty-five.
In South Florida, they're everywhere, and when a hurricane comes, solar doesn't just fly off people, you know, homeowners.
Yeah, the building department's gonna require a structural analysis of the roof, obviously. You do that when you, um, when they, when you submit for that. So they, you know, 'cause these, now you're worried not so much about the weight of these on that, it's the uplift because they're raised up off the roof. So the wind gets under there and it acts as a sail. It wants to, so. Usually we get a structural certification letter. Someone's in, done an analysis of the, uh, structure that's there and certifies it.
Yep, yep.
And, um, snow?
Yep.
The, the snow will sit on the, uh, solar panel and just, uh, slide off?
It'll just slide off once.
Is there, is there something we can do, like a snow guard or something, 'cause it is so close to that gutter and that active sidewalk that's next to it?
Yeah, we can install a snow guard as well. Yeah, we, we always do that with mo, you know, all of our systems.
Okay, yeah. Great.
Okay, so those were the, the main comments were hiding the thing a little bit?
Well, I think we need to speak to the fire marshal about hiding that and what his, his recommendation's going to be on that.
Yeah, I could send it out to our fire marshals and get comment back from them.
Okay, awesome.
And, but other than that, I think you satisfied the, particularly, you know, the, uh, the panels by removing the vent.
Yeah. Uh, would we still like for him to meet with the A R C to discuss that, or do you think that's not necessary?
I think we need to speak to the fire marshal first, and whatever information we get back from them, we relate to the A R C.
Okay.
Are we talking about the vent that's at the peak of the roof, not the-
No, no, no.
No, the middle one.
Is that white vent?
Isn't that for a bathroom?
It's not connected though.
It's not connected to anything. I think that the vent above it.
Is an attic vent.
Is, is, that one's an attic vent. That one was, that one-
It's definitely an attic vent.
Yep.
Okay, but usually that looks like a-
It's a plumbing vent.
Plumbing vent.
But it could have been a bathroom that was abandoned inside the building.
Okay.
Pantry, sink.
Okay, was there anything really other than that in the A R C comments? That, anything significant that, on this one?
Their main comment was about the, um-
Oh, the panels, yeah.
The panels, yeah, and that's-
And the screening of the-
Right, the equipment. Yeah.
Okay, so it was really just the arrangement of the panels and the cabinet, the potential cabinet for the, um, equipment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's it. All right, good. Okay.
And we need to know who owns the sidewalk with the property liners, are there monuments there?
Um, what do you mean? Should we?
What, what, what are the markers, uh, showing the property line?
Oh. I don't think so. Um, I think, believe the survey that we last saw was pretty old. Um, I don't think it had- We can. We can request an updated one. I mean, I think they would need an updated one at the end of the building permit anyways.
I think so.
So we could just get it now, need it.
They probably need to afford the permit, I would think.
Right, the only, I, I meant like at some point in the building permit process, so we can request it now from the, um, property owner.
Generally, the update, it's a simple process. You, they can reach back out to the, uh, original surveyor. It's not that expensive. It can be relatively quick.
Right.
So let's, let's, um, I think the actual items are gonna be, get an updated survey, um, reach out to the fire marshal for requ, um, potentially screening of the, uh, disconnects and the metering. If he's okay with that or not. And, um, then, no, understand what the code requirement is, if he's okay with the screening, what the distance separation is to be.
Right. Okay.
And on your end, you're gonna add snow guards.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, we'll just wait for the other information.
Okay.
But the, the panel array, I think will be fine. We'll, we'll give that to the A R C.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, of course.
You too.
You too. Okay, we're, we're ready to move ahead to three twenty-two Main?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, this is three twenty-two Main Street.
Deidre.
Hmm.
Conversion of the second floor storage space to a new dwelling unit over an existing retail space. And I guess we will start with staff comments.
Okay. So there's a lot of history with this, uh, specific property and specifically with the second story. It was already seen by the planning board in nineteen ninety-one for the addition of the second story. Um, which in my staff report, you can kind of see a little bit more detailed of the history going back and forth. Where it seemed like there was some hesitation, thinking that the second story would be habitable space because there was a bathroom and there was stairs from the second story leading to the back alleyway that's off of, um, Wind Lane. So that was requested to be taken out, the bathroom and the, uh, external staircase. So the-
I'm sorry, Deidre, were we talking about the yellow building with the facade that is-
No, it's this one. The blue building, above the comic book store.
Of my, my perspective, it's very bad. Okay, 'cause it doesn't even look like it's open to comics.
So this, this story is stepped back from the street and then it encroaches over the adjacent building, the adjacent town.
Ah, okay, thank you.
So that is part of the other issue with this current application. There is an easement allowing the second story to be built basically onto the neighboring property. Um, I believe in encroaches four and change feet, and then that runs along for a little over sixty feet, so it is a large encroachment. My hesitation with this is that- My hesitation with this is that currently the plans we received don't have a lot of detail to them, and frankly, they're a little confusing, because right now it's saying that the whole entire apartment is already built out. It's not denoting if there's anything that's being demoed, or if anything that's going to be added, um, including its external walls, the kitchen for the apartment, the bathroom. So as it stands, there's no external way to access this apartment, other than a spiral staircase within the comic book store, which is not permitted for many codes. And that's where I think that's why they didn't want there to be an external stair originally in the planning board decision in nineteen ninety-one, because that could allow for an apartment. So now, when we're coming in saying we do want an apartment, these things kind of then need to be brought up to code and brought up to safety measures if it were to be permitted. Um, and I'm not too sure, with the easement as it currently reads, it seems like it was permitted that any upkeep and maintenance was allowed, and this is also kind of where I am requesting the planning board a little bit to weigh in, I guess, as, as well as our council, council as well, because the easement does note that you can upkeep and you can replace if there is damage. But if technically, there's probably gonna be square footage added to this to allow for an external egress, would that count towards adding square footage to the second story, and would that then need the easement to be revised? Because I would think that the neighbor agreed to this easement, thinking that this attic space, and it is referred to as an attic space a few times in the previous approvals, it was just gonna be an attic space. It was noted that it was only a height of seven foot four inches, so it's not allowed to be habitable. Now it's showing a height, a ceiling height of eight feet, and that could be with some soffit work that was done at the time, because there is a difference in what was originally approved for a building permit and what is showing now on the plans as well. So that's kind of where it's getting a little tricky in, is this something that can kind of keep going by just adding a stair? And then it could go through with hopefully better four plans, it could just go through a change of use, a site plan amendment, conditional use, or would this need to be also an easement change? Would this need to be a little bit bigger than what it might have been originally?
In the back of the yellow building, aren't there stairs?
It's not the yellow building, though.
Yes, but.
Do you mean like?
There are stairs back there?
There's stairs behind the blue building as well, but it's only going up to the s- the main floor. It's because it, it goes down in elevation. So they have stairs. You can kind of see a little bit from, um, this is working, oh, disconnecting. Um, you could see it a little bit from a street view as well. There does seem to be a little bit of stairs. The plans kind of show it, um.
The, the, the reason why I'm bringing that up is I thought in the past that planning board had talked about the apartment in the back and the stairs.
Are you thinking, are you thinking of the one on, um, by the firehouse?
That's the one we.
And is that the one?
That's down by the.
The stairway in the back of the building?
Right.
Yeah, that's, when I saw this, that's where my head went to, and I thought that's where it was, but it's not. It's, it's a block away, it's on Wind. So it's really.
It's okay. This is the small staircase they kind of see that would be going into the comic book store from the rear. Other than that, there's, I don't believe a staircase that's going to the second floor, because that was part of the condition to building the second floor. Um.
And then the stairs closest to the camera is the.
That's for the, right.
And they have an apartment stairs.
I believe so, I'm not too sure about that.
All right, thank you.
There would also be an issue with, um, parking, because there's no onsite parking.
Okay, so in the past, we talked about the code that kind of disappeared if you're within two hundred feet of municipal parking lot?
Yes. I couldn't find that in the code. I could look again, but I couldn't find that.
It was specifically C two uptown, but.
Oh, okay.
Gone, and, and I don't know if it was actually in the code, or if somebody said.
Yeah. Like a policy maybe or something, yeah.
Prior to the end, within two hundred feet, so I was just wondering if.
I mean, it looks like people are parking in this alleyway, but it is butting up right against to a restaurant, so it seems more so, it might be the restaurant that's deliveries, things like that. I'm not sure who is using that alleyway right now.
There's an easement there, I think.
Yeah, there is.
Ten, only ten foot, though. Yeah, I mean, Ruvo uses it for deliveries to the kitchen and.
Right, so it's not adequate where someone could park there probably either. And that was also part of the decision from nineteen ninety-one, talking about how it shouldn't be an apartment, because there's also no parking for the tenants.
Although, I mean, if it was a residential unit and there's residential parking across the street, or it is?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
But it.
But that's, yeah. It could be reviewed within the context, but not, yeah.
I think staff is bringing this before the board for awareness, and staff is also looking for more accurate plans, some additional information before we can make recommendations to the board on this. So we would just like some, I mean, obviously you want to talk to the applicant, but I think that in the end, we would just like the board to get some additional information.
Right, you're, you're, yeah.
Oh, thank you. Just to review the plans here, and these are also the planning board minutes from their previous approval and discussion about it. It's the barb building. And it was discussed at the January planning board, in March, I think? Yeah, in the March planning board. This shows the building permit, noting again, for storage only.
Storage. Okay. Deidre, for the record, what's the year of that?
Oh, nineteen ninety-one, I believe.
Yep, yep, it's on the first page. Well, the memo's on the first page.
The memos, yeah. Um, this was showing how much it encroaches onto the neighboring property, so it's this whole entire slice. And this was the original plan, where it's showing a wood deck, a staircase, and all that. Um, but then it's showing, this is a spiral staircase in the center in the bathroom, and that's where one of the previous memos, um, from, I believe, the engineer of the property to one of the building inspectors, saying that they aren't gonna have the bathroom or the stairs, because the planning board believed that it would kind of encourage it to be habitable space. Um, showing the staircase again. So this is where it has a seven foot four ceiling. But these are like soffits kind of coming down with the skylights poking through here. So I'm not sure if it was internal work that then these were brought up, because the new plans are showing the drop ceiling, it's more raised up here. I believe this is eight feet or nine feet? Oh, sorry, eight feet up here. Nine feet for the first floor, eight feet up here. So that's where there's a difference in the ceiling condition. I'm not entirely too sure, just it does kind of look like they brought up the soffits. Um, and I believe that was it, yeah. So, but these are the memos and the planning board, and these are the plans that were cited.
I'll re-pull you around.
Thank you. And this is where a little bit of my confusion was, because this is showing it as, as built existing conditions. So does that mean all this was already built, already installed? There's no.
Did, did anybody go and inspect it? I mean, is this stuff actually there?
Well, that's what we're not sure of, because this is showing that it is. And that's where it's showing the new stud wall as if it would show us, that there's a new stud wall, would show us that there's an instant wall where this shouldn't be there, because it was denoted as attic space. But now we're coming up to it, and it's now everything was changed, it's all outfitted, and can it be apartment space? There's an easement on it. Does this count as a crease in floor space? They need access to this apartment other than the spiral staircase that's there. It's not even shown in the commercial space here. The stairs outside aren't shown, it's, um, just kind of a complete drawings.
Need more information?
Yep.
It should be, you know, the first floor plan, I think, in the minimum should be updated. There should be an analysis of egress, light, and everything that would be a typical requirement for habitable space. You know, I, I think you need to validate the ceiling heights, things like that. I mean, there are some things in the existing building code and the permanent maintenance code that may allow you to reduce some of that height, but that, again, that should be an analysis done of the habitable space, touching on all areas of it, excuse me.
Right, and then also making sure that they're up to just Aravillage Code of the four hundred square feet of habitable space, not including bathrooms, closets, and egress.
Okay. Okay, so we need a lot of, a lot of information.
Yeah, I think. Attention, I just, direct up some sort of report back to, uh, yeah, to, uh, address these items that we would report, right, in the center of our.
Yep, I think that, Representative.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll address anything that needs to be addressed. My big question is, and when speaking to the current owner, this, this was brought to the board on June tenth of twenty, uh, ten. Uh, I don't see anything on that report of what happened with that hearing. Um, maybe it was the zoning at that point, but they got to a certain point, again, with talking to the current owner, that the real holdup here was the fact that they didn't have the parking, there was no provision to get around that at the time. And since then, the, you know, we have, you could basically purchase, uh, parking. Uh, and that was to the current owners' thought that, you know, now that that's not, no longer a rule, and he got to the board at the time, um, that we could address that and, uh, and move forward. So I just don't see that in the report.
The, right, but the June tenth was just to address the parking? Is that what you're saying?
No, it was just to address this entire issue. Uh, John Andrews' office went to the board, uh, on this.
Oh, I didn't see it in the file. I could check again.
I just have, uh, yeah, I have a memo from Andrews' office back.
Because I have it with the two thousand and eight is when the easement was discussed, so that's where I was bringing it in.
Right, and I think that was in preparation to go, to go to the board in two thousand and ten. Uh, as far, again, this is documentation, I wasn't there, I don't know. I don't have anything on it, I just have, um, you know, this, this.
Communication to this board?
This is communication from the lawyers to the, uh, to the owner, basically stating that the June, the June tenth, you know, two thousand and ten meeting.
We should have a minute to that meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah. So there, there definitely was some sort of meeting then. So I, I would like, like that to be brought in with this, and then we'll obviously address what we need to address from there.
Okay, take a look at that, but then, you know, still need the.
I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, the plan, the plans, we could obviously make, make those adjustments, we have to anyway. This is more preliminary, um, you know, uh, what we're addressing preliminarily, but, uh, we wanted to jump off from that hearing, uh, for, and see where they left off. That's what we, you know, the owner wanted to do. So, uh, if we could find out what happened there, and then kind of go from that point.
Those, those records are, have all been scanned?
Yeah, they should, yeah.
It's possible it was mislabeled, and we didn't catch it, so we'll go back on the floor.
Okay, yeah, could be, right, okay.
But yeah, I mean, we'll, you know, we'll take the report and address what we can, you know, in the meantime.
Okay.
So the board doesn't meet next month, so that gives you a month to get everything together?
Plenty of time for me, yep. They waited this long, so it's fine.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to St. Charles Hospital.
Yeah, uh, all right, St. Charles Hospital. Can we get up the, um, what was resubmitted on this? So there's been some changes during the course of construction here, based upon whether they're trying to salvage a mature tree on the property, which I think is important. The President Jim O'Connell is very attached to one of the trees down in the parking lot, so we, we, they relocated one parking spot for that. We also had to extend a portion of the retaining wall, a couple of feet, based upon the A R C's comments, if you remember. Up on the hill, the two big maple trees that were up there, um, the root system is gonna be compromised, so we needed to extend the wall and raise it up a little bit, um, for that on that there. The two other changes that, um, and they're more A R C related.
Yes, you want to start with the original?
Well, these, these were done during the process. Neither one of these were, alternates except. There was a retaining wall put up over here to salvage this tree. All right, there's two trees here. So, um, we maximized the slope, but when they were digging into this, the root structure of this tree came out much further than they thought. So they ended up having to raise that wall up a little bit and extend it a little bit further over. Um, the wall as it was, was approved, so it's just a matter of it just being a little bit bigger and longer. But I think it's important that they maintain these, these trees, the vegetation. Uh, and then there was another tree in the parking lot over in this area here, so they relocated a spot over the other side of the parking lot. The railing, so this, now, the other changes have to deal more with the A R C comments, so I put them in my report. My last report, if you remember, did you print out that one, send me? I gave you both copies?
Yes.
My original with the A R C comments?
From two thousand twenty-two?
Yes.
Right here.
No, this is. All right, so they ended up going with this scheme. Here. Unfortunately, the modular company had made a mistake, and the hospital accepted it. They reversed the field and the, and the border. It still matches the, uh, the color and the intent that the A R C had wanted, but, um, I wanted to bring it to your attention that they did reverse. It's non-reversible at this point right now. The hospital accepted it.
I'm sorry, so it's gonna look like this?
It's, it originally was supposed to look like this, but the field color, which is the dark red brick, and the tan brick is the border, were reversed.
Oh, okay.
Um, the other thing is, it's very difficult to see in here, but there was a mesh railing, um, that's, uh, due to cost overruns and whatnot, they're gonna go more with a picket-style fence. It's gonna be the same color, same field, um, but it needs to be installed in there for safety, so. They, uh, due to, again, to cost restraints, it was over forty, maybe close to fifty thousand dollar upcharge to put the mesh in there, that they can't, they don't have the funds for that to do it at this point. Just bring it to your attention, because I know the A R C spent a lot of time on this, and they reviewed it all. So when it is changed, we, we understand why it was changed for these things. I think they're fine. I think that the minimus in nature for the overall proportion of the project, they are looking for a TCO next week. Uh, they want to get this open, they got state grant money on this. Um, they've been doing a wonderful job over there. Everything's been above the board. Um, Access has provided us everything that we've needed during the course of construction, all the inspections, all the third-party inspections. Working with Jim now, I think we're doing a final walkthrough, pending, um, temporary fencing, just when the planters are a little bit backward, so we can put a temporary fence up for that, um, so that they can open up this, uh, this wing and start treating the patients, the opiate patients that this is set up for.
First patient two weeks from today.
Yeah, correct.
Can we, can we get a financial reduction on this?
That's up to them contractually for them. I mean, that's, the hospital accepted it.
Yeah, Barbara, up on the.
So you can see the picture. It doesn't look bad.
Left and right, left is what was requested, right is what was built.
So you can see, it's just, it's just the reverse. It's, it's, the colors match.
Okay.
What about that set, that west wall? Does that, does that stay the same?
Which, which wall, this wall?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we had the reveals in there, um. I don't think those were addressed by the A R C either.
Oh, okay.
I was just showing it in rendering.
That, that's where the stairs is, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But I do believe it is, because I did see the metal, I think it is the hill, because I saw the metal paneling. There's a video feed that I looked at before I came here, showing, and they were putting that metal panel in, so I believe it's it.
Okay.
So that, that is metal panel, that will go up the side of the stairs there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Cool.
It was pretty cool to watch the modules come in. They set them on a day and a half. They did a really good job.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it is, it's, it's built.
It's, I think we can handle it administratively in this terms. I mean, we'll inform the A R C, but I, because they spent the time on it, it's wanted you to be aware of it.
Sure.
And the change, it's, again, it unfortunately happened, that they, they reversed the colors. This is also tucked into the parking lot. You don't really see this on the street.
Right.
You'd have to really stop and look through the trees to see.
Yeah, and it's not, I mean, it's, it's the same colors, it's just, it's not like they're totally different colors.
Nobody will notice.
Well, I, I, you said, I noticed it right away. I said, wait a minute, guys.
I mean, other than our professionals, you know, somebody too evident, they're not gonna.
Yeah, but it, it really is a very clean construction, and they did a, uh, it's, it's funny, you know, and I say this all the time, when you see something built thirty, forty, fifty years ago compared to today's standards, it's so much better today, you know, it's just, it's more level, it's cleaner, better materials, and it's, this is unfortunately, I like to see this as the emergency department, switch over the, on the op to the other part, but, uh, it's gonna be wonderful. The inside looks beautiful.
Okay.
Cool.
You, Barbara, you just never know who's gonna notice. That's why staff didn't want to make this decision. And Barbara, you just never know who's going to notice. That's why Steph didn't want to make these decisions.
Yeah.
Bring you, bring the heavyweights on board just in case.
The ribbon cutting?
I think, I think they are going to have a ribbon cutting or something on this, aren't they? Yeah.
Can I, can I mention that?
Oh, okay.
August fourteenth, I think, it's a Wednesday.
Okay.
It's scheduled.
That's a, very cool. It's a week after their first patient.
Yeah.
Great.
I don't think we have anything else on the agenda.
Nope, that's it.
Couple of things I wanted to talk about afterwards, after we sign off, but not, not in the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
I am too.
Okay, uh one of them was a matter of drainage.